Contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing the Zoom platform for this meeting. All members of the council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. One, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six, and the access code nine, one, one, zero, two, five, seven, two, seven. Or by clicking the link on the town web address. It is also being streamed live on the town, on the town website. Newmarketnh.gov and also on channel thirteen locally. We previously gave notice to the public how to access the meeting using Zoom, and the instructions are available on the newmarketnh.gov. If anybody has a problem, please call six oh three, six, five, nine, three, six, seven, three, six, one, seven, extension one, three, two, one. And we'll adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. And if the public is unable to access the meeting, we'll adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at another time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be by roll call. And Madam Chair, you need to ask each of the counselors if they are, do roll call for attendance and whether or not they are alone.
Okay, I will start with Counselor Burns. If you could say that you're present and whether or not you're alone.
I am present and alone.
Counselor Dumont.
Present and alone.
Counselor Sanders.
Present and alone.
Counselor Kuiper.
Present and.
Counselor Blackstone.
Present and alone.
And Counselor Brabec.
Present and alone.
And I am Tony Weinstein, and I am present and alone. Okay. Great, so we will, we're going to change the order of our agenda just a little bit, and the first item that we're going to address tonight is the we have a group of students with us who participated in volunteering for the state general, for our general election. And we wanted to acknowledge them, and I just wanted to say a couple of words, and I'll certainly open it up to the other counselors, and then eventually to the students. But, you know, our, our whole system, we're, we're so fortunate to have an incredible town clerk and town moderator who organizes our elections. And, and their staff, obviously, the staff of the town clerk, but our elections wouldn't, wouldn't be what they are, they wouldn't really take place without the, the work of the volunteers who come and give up their time for that, to make sure that democracy works, like here in our community. So, we have a number of volunteers who participate regularly, and one of the highlights in the last few years has been seeing the students who come and I, I hope learn, and, and again, give up their time and participate in this process. That is so important to the community, to the state, to the country. So, we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to recognize all of you who, who provided that service to our town. So, I wanted to make sure that I said that, but I also wanted to open it up in case any other counselors had any other comments that they wanted to make. And then I'll present the certificates and give the students a chance to say anything if they wanted to. I'm saying, oh, Counselor.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for volunteering, and we appreciate your help so much. It's a, Election Day is a wonderful day, I love it, and I'm so happy that you guys all helped us out with that day, so thank you.
And it's a really big job.
I will, I will say, thank you for volunteering. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to participate this year. However, when you turn eighteen, I believe there are a number of town boards you could also volunteer for too. So if you like Election Day, there's certainly more ways to get involved.
We're always recruiting. So I'm going to go ahead and read the names of, let me just click on that, sorry. Read the names of those students who did participate. I know that not everyone is here this evening, and they're not in any alphabetical order, it's just, I guess, I think how they were presented to us, so the first is Gabrielle Mador, and then Zoe McGurk, and Erischel Bolivar, Julia Perry, Grace Lunny, Caroline Lunny, Porter Malone, Lorelei Keys, Mitchell Tilton, Michaela Hartman, Gus Vigorito, and Colby Kumpf. So, in a perfect world, you know, we would all be there in the auditorium or in town council chambers and sending you the certificates and, and able to shake your hands and say hello and, and all, and all of those formalities that happen. So obviously, we can't do that tonight. But we will be mailing out the certificates, and again, we are just so incredibly thankful. So I wanted to just, if any of you had anything that you wanted to say, I wanted to open up the floor for all these, all of you, the students who assisted. So I'm seeing no comment. Oh, go ahead.
Um, well, thank you, everyone on this call. Thank you for all of your civic activism and engagement too, and I just wanted to say that this election went so smoothly, so round of applause for everybody. It was crazy. I loved it. It was awesome. I felt safe the entire time. And all the voters that I met, like, had such positive experiences, so I can't say enough good things about this election. So, round of applause.
Awesome, thank you so much. Well, thanks, guys. I don't want to, I don't want to keep you. I'm sure you guys have lots of things you want to do. You're more than welcome to stay for as, for any portion you want to participate in, but we'll go ahead and move on, and, and again, just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all of the work that you did for the election, and that I know that you'll continue to do as you move forward in your own personal careers. So thank you. All right, then we're going to go ahead and move on to our next item of business, and so the first thing is the public forum, and I don't know if we have anyone from the public.
I don't see any.
No, I don't think so. And so then we have the acceptance of minutes, and so the first item that we have is the October fourteenth, twenty twenty joint council planning board minutes, and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the joint council planning board meeting on October, meeting minutes on October fourteenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, if you could, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I didn't click request to speak, pardon my, um, I just noticed that one second, I wanted to pull it up, um. Uh, oh, this is the other meeting minutes. I apologize, we're good on those ones. I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders. You're muted. Still muted.
Hi.
Okay, Counsel Dumont.
Hi.
Counsel Kuiper.
Hi.
Counsel Brabec.
Hi.
Counsel Blackstone.
Hi.
Counsel Burns.
Hi.
Counsel Weinstein.
Hi.
Motion passes seven, zero.
And the next item is our November fourth, twenty twenty meeting minutes, and so if any, or I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on, from November fourth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Any questions or comments or corrections? Counsel Brabec, maybe?
Yeah. Um, I just noticed, um, when we made the motion to approve Chris Blackstone, it doesn't note that Counsel Blackstone abstained from that vote.
Okay.
Good catch. Anything? No, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Hi.
Counsel Dumont.
Hi.
Counsel Kuiper.
Hi.
Counsel Brabec.
Hi.
Counsel Blackstone.
Hi.
Counsel Burns.
Hi.
Counsel Weinstein.
Hi.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on my report, I want to give a brief update on the town's COVID nineteen situation. As of today, we had nine known cases in the community, so that's dropped since our report of when we had fourteen. On November tenth, and we had fourteen, I like giving percentages also, just to put it in perspective, that on November, November tenth, we had fourteen people in the community positive with COVID nineteen, which is zero point one five percent of the population of the town. And total, we've had fifty-two cumulative cases as of that date, which is point five, five percent. Total, we've had one thousand six hundred and eighteen people tested, or seventeen percent of the population tested, and this is the PCR test, not the rapid test. It did, go over a few other things that we have been meeting the last few weeks, getting ready for the potential rollout of a vaccine. You're hearing the same thing we are, that it will be going to first responders, those and, and conquered housing for seniors, and those most at need first. We do not know a date, we're getting that same information as you are, but the Department of Health and Human Services will be in charge of that. Other items is that we are looking at the Frost program, which is a first responder rapid testing program. That would allow first responders to be tested with the antigen rapid test, not the PCR, which I just mentioned. That would allow them to know immediately if they, if we believe they have COVID. And in addition, that they can get tested later for the PCR. The difference is the rapid test is just that, it's rapid. It gives you a quick shot, you know, but know whether or not you have it, but if they test positive, they want you to test again because of a number of false positives that they've had with the case, with the test, so that is where we are with that item. On the written report, I just want to give a special report that at the end of October, with a third of the fiscal year completed, we've expended thirty-eight percent of the fiscal year twenty-one budget. There are no glaring issues with the budget, as most of the expenses are one-time expenses that we have at the beginning of the year. In comparison of fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two, we have expended a lower percentage this year than we did in the previous year. On the revenue side, we're approximately nine hundred and sixty. Sounds right. We're on target for motor vehicle registrations and building permits are slightly higher. We've collected about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in additional property taxes so far. One of the things we were concerned about is that people won't be able to pay their property taxes due to the economy, and that has not come to light. I do want to highlight that recreation revenues are significantly lower than last year due to the lack of programming. Last year, at this point, we collected forty percent of our annual revenue, and this year we're at eighteen percent. I just wanted to let you know that of the two hundred and thirty-three thousand, sixty dollars we were awarded from the Gopher funds, which is the CARES Act funds, we've expended two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. So we are running out of that. That includes the contribution that we made to the school district. As a writing of my report last week, we had a preliminary tax rate. Now we do have a tax rate. We set the tax rate last week at two, twenty-five dollars and forty-six cents, which is a dollar twenty increase over the previous year. Areas that we knew that the town was going up thirty cents to six dollars and one cents, the county went down a nickel to ninety-one cents. The local education went up at one dollar and thirteen cents, and the state education went up eight cents. So for a total of an increase of a dollar twenty, we were anticipating a higher increase in the school, but that didn't come to fruition because they returned about nine hundred thousand dollars of unexpended funds from last year that offset their increase. In my report, I have just a update and a number of pictures of the McAllen Dam project, but I also wanted to make the council aware of a situation that we've run into there. Right now, they have been doing, we're going to be having a major change order come in for the left abutment or where the gate is, where, where the crest gate is. One of the things they were looking for was ledge to put the new gate in. When they removed the gate, it was, there was no ledge there, it was in wood. So we actually have to do deeper pilings than we thought in that area. We're anticipating that GZA's contract will be an additional six and we don't have an answer yet for some, the construction company, Suncow, and the crest gate, but we do believe it's between sixty and eighty-five thousand dollars. When the time comes, we have forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars remaining in the capital reserve fund that we withdraw, as well as thirty thousand dollars available in the sidewalk reconstruction fund from the operating budget. We'll probably have to transfer in there. This is just one of those situations that we didn't, nobody knew what was under there until you opened it, and yeah, we're just trying to get all the information together now, and we'll come to the, the council with that change order and that information. Also on my unwritten report, you've seen a number of signs through town that the DOT is going to be replacing Godrails on Sunday and or Monday on Route one oh eight. That, in order to make it go faster, they've asked to clo, they're going to close the road from eight PM till six AM, so they can just have complete access to the road. During that time, there's going to be a detour for cars. Traffic will be detoured down New Road, but truck traffic will be re-detoured from one, one fifty-two to one twenty-seven, twenty-five to eighty-seven. So they won't be having the large trucks going down New Road during that time, just smaller traffic. So I just want to make the council aware and the public aware of that. And finally, we were notified late last week that we have been, I don't want to use the term awarded, but we've been offered a, a loan from the state revolving loan fund for a million dollars with ten percent of that being forgiven if for the New Road stormwater project. We've had that for a number of years in our capital improvement plan, and it's been a high goal for the community to do that. It'll solve a lot of the problems also in the area known as the bowl, to be able to get water flowing faster through there. That being said, we will need to issue debt, so we will need to go to the voters this year in order to ask for the million dollars. Again, ten percent of that will be forgiven. I also want to just make the council aware that the, the reason why I want to do it so quickly is we're already going to be opening the road for the water replacement that was approved the last year, and there's going to be a savings if we combine the two projects when it's open, you know, much like a surgery, you don't want to open the, the body too many times. You'd rather open it once, fix it, and then move on. So at the next meeting, you'll have a resolution to a one million dollar issuance of debt for the New Road wa, uh, stormwater project, not to confuse it with the water main project. And that is all I have tonight. If there's any questions, I will take those now.
Great, I'm going to start just by saying that if people are using their request to speak, I, I don't have that capability tonight, so just raise your hand. Counsel Dumont.
Uh, Mr. Town Manager, I just had a couple of questions. Big picture, going back to COVID, it seems like New Market is doing fairly well in comparison to other communities. It does seem like there's occasionally some hype that comes up when our numbers do touch up a little bit, and then they go back down. In general, though, from your, your professional view, New Market is still on the, the positive end of this pandemic. We are in no way, you know, as bad as other communities, correct?
Absolutely. There's no way where, you know, I think we, we jumped on it very early. People stayed home at the beginning of the pandemic, and we were one of the first to enact a mask ordinance. I know in one of our neighboring communities, they're seeing a large uptick, and according to my counterpart there, it's not due to the student population, but due to, he said Halloween parties. But we've been very lucky the same about a number between the five to fourteen is probably the highest I think I've seen it range. In addition, it's the, the numbers that I also look at is where we are as compared to March. And just to remind people that we're in a different area than we were in March. March, we had no idea how we were going to do this. You know, like I said, there was a person once said to me, it was like trying to build a plane while flying, because we didn't know what was going to happen. We're in a much better position now than we were then. Yes, we knew we were going to get a spike in November. We've been saying that since March, that to anticipate one then. However, we don't, the, and I, and I want to remind people this, we never shut down because to stop the, the complete spread of COVID. We shut down so we didn't have a overbearance on the hospitals, which we didn't see in March, and we're not seeing right now. The hospitalization numbers, yes, are going up, but not to the, the numbers that we'd be concerned. So I think, you know, we're doing well, and I think the, the state and as a whole is doing well. When you're hearing the national news, we're looking at what's going on in the Midwest, the South. We, yes, we're, like we said, we're seeing a surge, but just not the surge that they're, they're getting hit now. This is our, like we're saying, this is our second surge.
I appreciate that, and I just think it's helpful to have that, that, that knowledge put out there for the community. I did just have two more follow-up items. I did see that it looks like the police department had closed their lobby. Do you anticipate the town having to go back to that? I, I personally wouldn't be surprised, but I was just curious to know.
You know, my, I'm going with a philosophy now that if banks can be open, then we could be open at the same time, because then the amount of business that somebody who comes into town hall is going to do is probably about the same amount of time as somebody making of a deposit. I mean, we're only still allowing one or two people in the building at a time. They're at least six feet apart, masks are mandatory. So yes, at this point in time, we're still going to continue with the clerk's office. We are meeting on that constantly. I mean, if we see a huge uptick, then yes, we'll review that again, but we're, you know, a lot of our neighboring communities also haven't shut down their offices for the public at this point. The police are different just because it's, it's much more difficult, and it's not, it's not odd, but they're open twenty-four hours. So if somebody comes in the middle of the night, they may have an issue, it's going to put officers at risk, then deal with it. Versus, you know, we've got limited hours, we know who comes in, we have one door. It's usually, like I said, a short period of time, so not at this point in time now. To, to go on that, we're actually on the rec side, we're looking at offering some additional programming in the coming weeks, because there's going to be need for after-school programming. So we're starting to look at that as well.
Excellent. And then my last item, I just wanted to comment on the McAllen Dam surprises that you had found. As somebody who's not totally on board with the McAllen Dam project at the beginning, you know, when I first came on almost three years ago, I fully expected that there were probably going to be a couple of surprises, and I, I just want to say, I appreciate the fact that we, you've been working so well with Suncow and GZA, especially for those skeptics in town who had questions about the overall cost and the impact to the, you know, the tax rate and everything. It's just appreciative to know that even for all the little things that may come up, they are being handled professionally and, you know, timely.
Yeah, and I got to give credit also to the Public Works Director. He's been monitoring and being the project manager for this, for the whole project. Truthfully, I only, besides getting the updates daily, if I go down to site, that means something really, something went wrong. But I got to give him the, the credit for the data management of that.
Any other questions or comments for the town manager? I had one or two, and so one is about the, the number of cases, Steve. I don't know if you can answer this. Like, I, I, I trust the information that you're giving us. The other, the, the other piece of that is that when I look at the state website, those numbers are very different, and so, like yesterday, the number was sixteen.
Yeah.
Is in New Market, and so I'm just curious if you can speak at all to that discrepancy, and I don't know if you can. I know that there's, I know they've had a lot of issues on the state side. So I, I.
And you're right, we are actually trying to get that solved ourselves, because it's frustrating where either we know somebody is out of quarantine and they're still, their number is still on the list, or exactly what you said, we've known people who have tested positive, but they're not reported yet. And this isn't just a New Market problem, this is a statewide problem. So this is our. Yes, it's gonna, it, I think I'd be more concerned if our cases went up by five. You know, we fluctuated by five here and there, not one or two here and there, which we, we haven't seen the fluctuation of five. Ten, that would be really issues. We do see some small fluctuation. It's just the reporting time. And I think it's a good thing to bring up too, is that remember that these positive cases are, um, again, the PCR cases, it's not the rapid tests. So these are the, the much more, yes, we know this, that this test is the, and I can't, I. Can't remember exactly. This is the one that goes really deep up your nose. So, um. It's the, it, so yes, that we're making sure that that there. So you may hear if somebody had a rapid test. Um, and they tested positive and that number didn't change, well, they also have to get a PCR test after they get that just to confirm it.
That's good to know. Uh, and I, I also wanted to say, I think it's fantastic that we have almost to the dollar, you know, uh, shy of a couple thousand dollars. Uh, spent our gopher funds and, and I, I know that we don't want to spend them all, but at the same time, we don't want to leave any money on the table. And so where there's obviously a deadline, I'd say kudos to you and to your staff for making sure that. That we didn't leave anything on the table, because I think that that's really important. And that was all I had. Um, if there aren't any other comments, then we will go ahead. Oh, and I, I do, sorry, I have one other thing. About the department reports. Um, I just wanted to comment, I was going through the. On the, um, in the Public Works Department, I was looking through the charts and those numbers are definitely still off.
Yeah.
So I wanted to, um, cause it's hard for us to evaluate. And some of those are pretty big numbers and if they're, it's hard for us to, to know where we're at as a community, so.
I'll try to work with the, the finance director and the public works director. We're switching like, as the council knows, we're switching everybody from, uh, sorry, Council Brayback. From, uh, Google to, uh, the Microsoft product. So I think we can maybe have a more consistent graphing and information system. And I'll work with them to do that.
And I appreciate that they've always included charts and then other departments haven't, so I don't know, you know, like maybe some consistency with that would be helpful.
Yep.
So then assuming that I, I don't see any other, uh. Hands up, then we can move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Counselor Dumont.
It is not a report, it is just an announcement. Um, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but the town budget presentation is going to be November thirtieth. So we will not have another meeting as a council, um, prior to that budget meeting occurring.
That's. And, um, I know Counselor Dumont handed out a budget schedule. And I'm gonna have a revised one shortly, just because if we have some bonding issues that we are gonna have to do. We're gonna have to meet some deadlines. In addition, um, as I said in the last, uh, meeting with H B one, 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 two, nine. If we switch from the deliberative session to the COVID protocols, it's gonna change some timelines in theirs too.
Any other committee reports? All right, I, um. Will comment on a couple. So. Sorry, I'm just pulling up my notes. Um, the Energy and Environment Committee met. Sorry, let me just get them. Um, so the Energy and Environment Committee met on the ninth and, um. The, eh, the crux of the meeting was really about this community power and, um. And so reviewing, um, that piece of it and then also talking about goals for. Energy moving forward. And so, um, the committee is planning to come up with some goals to recommend to the town council. And so that's the energy committee. And then there was also a planning board meeting. I don't know, um, Counselor Blackstone, if you wanted to speak to that, if not, I'm certainly, um. Able to talk about that meeting.
Yeah, go ahead. It was my first meeting.
Um, so the planning board met on the tenth. And, um, a, a couple of things that I thought that I, we should mention. There was an item, uh, on seventy-seven Hershey Lane, they've been working on that for quite a while. And that's, there's an open spa- eleven lot, open space, um, single-family subdivision. And so that, um, I bring that up i- in particular because. We're gonna be seeing some, I, I think some information around that because there's a road that needs to be upgraded. We'll probably be seeing that sometime in the near future, uh, cause that's gonna come before the town council. But they're waiting for conditional approval from the planning board before it comes to us. Then they've also adopted the Water Resources Chapter of the Master Plan, so that's. That's exciting. I know that they've worked, I, I, again, it was my first meeting also, so they've been working on that for forever. Uh, for quite a long time and, uh, it's exciting to see that. Be finalized and it's a very extensive. Piece of work. And so I, uh, I don't know. If Diane has sent that around yet or not, um, but that will be coming, uh, or should be coming to the town council also. And then lastly, the floodplain. Information and there was, um. So there's gonna be new maps adopted at the end of January and, um. There was a informational meeting through FEMA just this afternoon, so I was able to tune in for a little while. Um, I don't know if anybody else was able to tune in.
Yeah, I, I watched the meeting. It was, it was by far the worst presentation I've ever seen. I, I, if, if that's what FEMA is like, I can't believe it. I mean, they can't do a simple presentation.
It was dense.
Yeah, I don't know if you stayed to the end, the guy who did the insurance, he actually knew what he was talking about. Everybody else, uh, whatever their specialty was, it is not communicating, they, you know, communicating information.
No, I don't think that that is their specialty.
I think it's for all of them, it was the first time they've ever used Zoom.
I think for a lot of people on the call, it was the first time.
No, the presenters I'm talking about. Yeah. Just constantly flipping the slides back and forth and like, you know, they put them up, take them down, move them around. You know, incoherent babble, it was really bad. As, you know, I'm thinking, this is my tax dollars at work here.
Have quite that impression, but, um, but I will again say that it was, it was very dense. It was a lot of information. Um, those, uh, the recording of that presentation. I don't know with that review, if anybody wants to see it, but the recording.
Yeah, if anybody wants to give a presentation about how not to do it, this is a great example to use.
Um, but if anybody's interested in, in, um. Hearing what they had to say, because I do think that there's some valuable information there.
Yeah, the key, the, the, sorry to interrupt, the key thing was. If you, if you have flood insurance, if, if somebody wants flood insurance, you need to get it before the twenty-ninth of January. Because after the twenty-ninth is gonna go up significantly. Like the example that they showed, it went from five hundred dollars to four thousand dollars.
Right, so I would strongly encourage anybody who needs. To, um. I think it's. I think we can forward that, those sites along. I know that I posted them on Facebook, um, in a couple of different locations. Um, definitely on the community chat. And so that information is out there, but I'm, I, I know that some of. This information was available on the town website, Steve, I, I believe.
It is.
And so I would just definitely encourage people to, um, get that information firsthand, because I think that that's, uh, gonna be important for anybody who. Whether you think you're in a floodplain or, or not, um, because there was some question about that. So making sure that people have the accurate information, uh, and those are good resources that are available to the community. Uh, Counselor Dumont.
I did want to ask, um, because I was trying to find it beforehand, uh, because I wasn't able to tune into the presentation. Do they have tentative flood maps drawn up for us to see? Or are they still not official?
I guess technically they're not official.
Correct. Um, but they, but they are. Idea of where, okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and there are people that you can, um. Connect with through FEMA who will, and that was one of the, one of the benefits of, of today's. That you could, you know, people could talk one-on-one with representatives from FEMA. About their individual properties. Um, so then, I'm not seeing any other, um, oh, sorry, Counselor Sanders.
Just a quick update on the tra- uh, Arts and Tourism Committee, we met yesterday and. The Conservation Committee, we were waiting for them to do their photo exhibit and they did not have enough interest, so that's gone by the boards. However, it's too late for us to jump in right now with decorating spaces. Um, I did want to let everybody know, we're up to fifteen artists who will be participating and we have nine businesses that have now committed. Um, to hosting one of the artists, so it's looking more like now probably March or April. Before we get the, before we get it all together. So we've been kicking around some other ideas of what else we'd like to be working on and it looks like we may have a new member by the next meeting.
Awesome. Counselor Dumont.
I don't know if this is the most appropriate time, but I figured since we're talking about, uh, our different committees. Um, I had heard some ideas about maybe if New Market could find a place to kind of welcome almost a graffiti wall. There are a lot of communities that are trying to institute them where they're appropriate, but to. People away from wanting to graffiti, for example, the old train station building down by the, uh, the junction. But somewhere that artists and people who want to express themselves through that forum could do it in an area that's publicly acceptable. Display what they have type of thing. Um, it was something that I had, I had heard talking about the other day when I was out grabbing food and I started to look into it a little bit more. And it does seem like that's kind of, uh, something that's picking up more in, you know, more. Um, metropolitan communities, um, like, you know, in the, in the cities where they do have more of that type of activity. But I wasn't sure if that was something that might be worth exploring in New Market.
Counselor Sanders.
It came up in a way, Zachary, we're talking about the, um, wall near the library with the mural on it. And possibly, um, we've been given permission by the artists that did that to do whatever we choose with it now. And one of the ideas we were discussing was painting it all over and then allotting space to different artists to do. Whatever with very, very few guidelines except family-friendly. If it's on a major.
No, that's awesome. I'm glad you're able to get that permission too.
We're considering as well as other spots around town, we might be able to do something like that.
That's neat. That's very, um. Progressive. And I mean that in the. Way, um, while we're talking about committees, I did want to mention that when we talked about our committee assignments. Um, at our last meeting, we talked about the assignment for coast. Um, but we never finalized anything and so I wanted to make sure that I brought that up again tonight. And if we don't have a counselor, I know that Steve, you had mentioned that we, we could, um. Put this out to the community because we may have somebody in the community who has more expertise or interest in something like that. So how, what would you recommend for how we go about doing that?
I say we advertise it like we do it, like the other committees and post it, that the, the coast seat is open.
I mean, I'm not seeing anybody, um. Uh, in this body who, who's dying to be, to serve on that committee, so if. As, I don't want to step on any toes, but as long as that's the case, if we could go ahead and, and post that, I think it would make sense.
Okay, we'll do that.
Awesome, then I am gonna go ahead and move forward with, um. Old business. And so we have a few ordinances in the second reading tonight and the first is. Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash eleven, and that's for the water plant boiler replacement and I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash eleven, the water plant boiler replacement.
I will second that.
Great, and Sean Greg is here, if you wanna, um, give us an overview.
Um, the, um. Boiler at the, uh, water plant was put in in the eighties. Siemens is our contractor that performs the maintenance on our boilers. Uh, they determined that the, uh, we're having problems and the boiler is unfixable. Um, they estimated that the project would cost, uh, sixty-nine to seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we had, uh, right peers put together and evaluate what needed to get done and put together a bid. Uh, we put it out to bid, uh, we had, I think. Five, uh, different people show up to look at the boiler. Um, and then we had two that actually submitted bids on them. Uh, Jason Hood, uh, was fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. And Industrial Steel and Boiler Services was fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, asking the town council tonight to appropriate or to authorize, um, fifty-nine thousand. Uh, six hundred and sixty dollars out of the, uh, water capital reserves to do the project. Um, that includes three thousand dollars in case they find something unforeseen. Real building. So I'm asking, uh, and there's, uh, roughly, uh, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the. Capital reserve funds for the water department. So I'm looking for the town council to approve, um, money to come out of the cap- water capital reserves to replace the boiler.
Counselor Dumont.
Thanks. Sean, I, I trust your work, um, but as always, just curious, what is the average lifespan when we make a cost for a, a, a purchase for. An object like this? Are we looking another three or four decades out of it, or is this something that we're gonna have to revisit in ten years?
I, myself for equipment, I usually say it's twenty years.
Fair enough. I mean, nineteen eighty boiler, going to twenty twenty is great. I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, typically, I mean, some last longer, some last, you know, whatever. Uh, we did try and, um. Pick a boiler that was, uh, off the shelf and wasn't a special order. Um, and we are designing it in such a way that this boiler fits the buildings and its uses now. But if the, if that building goes industrial and needs a bigger boiler, we can actually set another boiler next to it. Um, to accommodate.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So my question is. We talked a little while ago, I, I don't know, maybe a, a few months ago now about that building and so, um. Which is why I'm thankful that, to hear you say that you're looking at multiple uses potentially for, for the building and, and how that boiler would be used. Um, but overall, like what are our plans for? For that building, because I hate to see us continue to put money into a building that we're maybe gonna sell or not use, or thank you, Steve.
Yeah, twofold one, I, again, I think we need to do a building study. Of the, of all our facilities and what we can and cannot use it for. Um, as for whether or not. Are we sinking money into a building? Yeah, in this situation, even if we dispose of it by selling it. Um, they're gonna need a boiler. So, um. It, it's, it's necessary to do it. I, I, again, I think we need to do a facility study. Sooner rather than later, we have some, you know, we have. We're in need of room in some places, but we have empty facilities in others. So I think it's something we need to look at.
Any other, um, questions or comments for Sean or for Steve? Uh, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Brayback. Counsel Blackstone.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Um, the next item that we have is resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, and that is the, um, purcha- or.
Lease purchase.
Lease purchase, thank you. Pulling it up. The, um, lease purchase of a twenty twenty-one E one rescue pumper engine. And I would accept a motion to approve that. And I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one thirteen, the lease purchase of a twenty twenty-one E-one rescue pumper engine.
I'll second that.
And we have um, our Chief Malaski here to uh, speak to that, so um, if you wanna talk about this.
Thank you. This engine um, is the last engine that was purchased by the town of Newmarket to fit in a building. Um, we used to have the restriction in the old station, so we the truck is very small, there's no compartment space, um, it's gonna be twenty-two years old, we typically keep these for twenty years to keep our ISO rating up. Um The current engine, we had a committee of seven members of the department, they worked for six months reviewing demos, doing their research, looking at other departments' new apparatus to come up with ideas and savings and things they did that they wish they did differently and learned from their mistakes. So we have a very good pack, which we put together to serve the town for the next twenty years. Um, it'll give us the space we need for our equipment, because it's a rescue pumper, right now, we currently can't carry all the equipment on the current engine, so we have to grab stuff from the station depending on the call and that's not a great scen- scenario to have. But everything will fit on the truck, um, it's the first lease purchase that I'm aware of, the town has done for a fire truck, but this is the these vehicles have gotten so expensive, this is the nature of the beast today, everybody is, is doing this. Um, we got a pretty good rate, the finance director purchased paperwork and said everything is in order and uh, he saw no issues or concerns for the town manager to be able to sign things, um and it's uh gonna take a year to build it, so we wouldn't take delivery for another year. Um, and the current vehicle would go into reserve piece, which we currently don't have a reserve pumper, so we get no credit from ISO for that. Um, what it'll cost the town to keep that truck is uh, we have to do a pump test once a year, it's about three hundred dollars to do the pump test. Um, but it'll just be kept in reserve, so if a piece come out of service, we'll put that piece back in service. Take minimal equipment off of it to put on the other vehicle, but uh
Madam Chair. If I could just add about the financing, um, what we're doing is, the chief mentioned that we're gonna be doing a lease purchase, we're gonna withdraw um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the capital reserve fund, which currently has uh, about three hundred and twenty-five thousand uh, dollars. After that, we'll be paying forty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars annually to the lease purchase. This is not a, does not have a non, it has a non-appropriation clause. So what that means is if for whatever reason, we do not appropriate the funds to pay it can take the, the fire truck. Um, if we did a non-appropriation clause, that would have to go before the voters. And um, discussing with the town attorney as well as DRA, we were able to go this route. And what we'll do is we'll put it into the following year's budget. Let me phrase that, two years budget, the lease purchase will take next year's from the capital reserve fund as well to get that drawn down. So plus, we're already putting fifty thousand dollars into the capital reserve fund, um, so if, if the budget passes, it'll grow anyways.
Any questions for um uh, Chief Malaski or for the town manager? No, then um, I, let me just make sure that I didn't have any, I had a list. No, my question was just about the funding, so um, and then I guess my only other thought was, do we have any any other items that might be coming out of the capital reserve, you know, obviously aside from uh, for, aside from the truck, are there any other purchases that you anticipate that we'll need to make in the coming year or so?
It won't be anything that would come from the capital reserve, just the uh this would come from the ambulance revolving fund for some equipment, but nothing from the capital reserve.
Great. Then seeing no other questions, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont does not appear to be present.
Okay.
So, uh, Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, the next item that we have is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash fourteen and that's creating a parking commission and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fourteen, creating a parking commission.
I'll second that.
Um I don't know if you wanted to speak to that at all?
It's pretty self-explanatory, um, we based it off of the city of Dover's. Um, they have a parking commission, there's some, you know, parking downtown, it will take um, four new market one Newmarket Town Councilor and uh, two commercial property business owners in the downtown area. Uh, the terms besides the counselor will be three uh, three-year terms. And it's gonna advise the council and the manager on how to address parking issues in the downtown.
Great, any questions, oh, Counselor Dumont.
I had a one question, um, concern. I wasn't sure if it made sense to add a spot so the police department could have a representative on there.
The police department's gonna staff it.
Ah, already then.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, I'll just say that we have been talking about parking for every, it's come up every year that I've been on the council, so I'm really excited to see things no matter, you know, who knows what this means, but at least to see things moving forward and to continuing this conversation in a meaningful way, so um, with that, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Uh, Counselor Dumont?
Would now be an appropriate time to nominate someone from the Newmarket Town Council to sit on the parking commission?
I think so.
I'd uh, like to nominate John Kuiper as our Newmarket Town Councilor to sit on the parking commission.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I accept.
I'll second it.
Any comments, um questions, Counselor Kuiper, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Um, seeing no others, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Counselor Kuiper. Um, and then we are able to move on to um, appointments and nominations and we have one this evening and that is um, just pulling it up and that's for uh, Lisa Henderson to be reappointed to the SRPC Commissioner or as SRPC Commissioner for, let's see. Says FY twenty-one and I think, is it a three-year term?
I believe it is.
Yeah, so anyway, I would accept a motion to approve that nomination.
I'll make a motion to approve the nomination for Lisa Henderson for as SRPC Commissioner.
I will second that.
And that's Stratford Regional Planning Commission, took me a second to um remember what those letters stood for. So um, she's served in this role before and I appreciate her continuing to serve our community and um, if there's no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And just for the, you know, for anyone who's interested, we have two representatives to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. Um, and they um, you know, sort of when we were talking about the, the coast representative, you know, they represent our interests in our community. Um the Planning Commission, that does a lot of work, um, so we're really fortunate to have people who are willing to serve in those capacities. And I'm just clicking through, a lot of tabs open, so um, so that's all we have on our agenda and um, are there any closing comments? Um sorry, by town counselors. Counselor Dumont.
Um, Thanksgiving is, I think, my favorite holiday that we have here in the US, so I just wanted to say, I, I hope everybody has a safe and healthy one, uh, town counselors, town of Newmarket reps, town employees, just enjoy it, be safe, be smart, but have a good time, because uh, Lord knows we need some holidays this year after uh, after the pandemic.
Very, very true. Yep, and I will just second that, wishing everyone a safe and healthy and happy Thanksgiving, um and um, seeing no other comments, um, if there are no other objections, I will consider us adjourned.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, thanks.